It is Monday, October 7th, 2019. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the Nashua High School North Boardroom. This is the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting. I am calling to order at 5:35. Okay. All right. So Mrs. Porter is here. Ms. Timmons is on the phone, joining us. Ms. Timmons, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Here.
Ms. Odin is not here tonight. We have Dr. McKinney. We have Ms. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Van Twiver, and Mr. Kaufman. Okay. Excuse me. So we have only one item on our agenda, but it's a long and important item. We are going to be getting a presentation on assessment review. And it's going to be presented in two sections. Dr. McKinney will present the elementary section and Ms. Fitzpatrick will present the secondary. We will wait until the end of the elementary presentation for questions, so I encourage members to take notes as they go. And once the questions are done on that, we'll proceed with Ms. Fitzpatrick. Okay. So thank you very much for your work on this. We're looking forward to it. And, uh, Dr. McKinney?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to review the number of assessments that are present in the district, beginning with the, um, elementary level. Uh, we've put together an agenda for tonight. These five items, uh, will be going through. Uh, we'll begin by referencing the strategic plan and the district goals that align with the strategic plan. And I'll be speaking to the elementary assessments and next step, next steps. And Ms. Fitzpatrick will be speaking to the secondary. Thankfully, this year, we have our 1924 Strategic Plan with our outlined vision, mission, and values. Uh, this strategic plan is, um, allowing the district to be in alignment, K to 12, and throughout the district around a common set of, um, values, mission, and vision, as well as the following five district goals. Currently, um, our building principals submitted their building goals that are aligned to these five district goals, um, that align with academic growth, nurturing learning and working environment, professional development, strategic partnerships throughout the city, and, um, budget alignment for our future priorities. Uh, this slide here, um, is our elementary assessment inventory. This work was put together by our district data leadership team. We took an inventory of all the assessments that are being completed across the district and looked for the areas that they evaluate, the levels that they're administered, who administers, the frequency of the administration, and more importantly, the type of assessment. Uh, we look at student performance through multiple assessments towards the standards. And we want to have a balanced system. If you look at this diagram, which we'll speak to again later, um, we have a number of these assessments in the district. We don't want to just, uh, look at student performance with just one large-scale summative assessment. We want to be looking at student performance over time in a variety of ways. This is, uh, the elementary assessment inventory continued with, um, additional assessments listed here. Um, and we'll be going through a number of these, uh, in the following slides. So the first one we're going to begin with is the early literacy assessments. These are mainly used in our primary grades, K and 1, uh, usually around September and November. They identify phonemic awareness, letter identification. This is really a screener. It's diagnostic. It's formative. It helps the teacher keep progress of our youngest students. Uh, this slide here shows, again, the explanation and purpose. This really came, um, I want to say, three years ago from the RSA, kind of the dyslexia log, saying that schools had to have screenings in place to ensure that kids are getting the services and not going through with having, um, basically disability without having it identified. So that first year, we had, we screened K and 1, and right now, we do all the kindergarten students and only new first grade students to the district. You can see up here, it's letter ID, letter sounds, initial sounds, blending, segmenting, and rhyming. Um, and these are really the tools that the teachers use at the primary level for kids to begin developing, um, phonological awareness. Uh, I would say we're in our third year, and a lot of these assessments come from the Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System, which I'll talk about later. These are the optional assessments, so it's nice that we're in alignment and using similar resources, um, across the grade levels. Uh, so this slide speaks to, um, the number of students that met the expectations in the beginning of the year, and the number of students that met the expectations in the end of the year. Uh, please note, the, obviously, the district expectations in the beginning of the layer, beginning of the year is a little bit lower than it is towards the end of the year. You certainly wouldn't ask a, um, fit, uh, five-year-old to know everything in the beginning of kindergarten that they would know at the end. Um, again, these expectations are based on the Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System, and the expectations grow higher over the course of the year. Again, I mentioned the, uh, Benchmark Assessment System. We say BAS. Uh, this is our reading assessment, assesses student fluency, comprehension, K5, given at least two times a year. Uh, we consider it a screener and a diagnostic, and really formative in terms of informing the teacher on what the student's needs are to make reading growth. You can see more information in terms of the explanation and purpose. This is a one-on-one assessment. It's given by a classroom teacher with a student, um, with books, um, that are designed specifically for this assessment. It takes approximately 30 to 40 minutes to administer it, with an optional writing portion that goes with it. It does take a considerable amount of time for the teachers, but I don't think there's any better way to know the strengths and needs of a student in terms of their reading without sitting and listening to them and talking about their reading. Uh, we use the results of this assessment throughout the year, certainly during guided readings. So when teachers pull groups of students together, whether by a similar level or similar strength or a similar need, uh, this assessment helps guide their instruction. During the course of Reader's Workshop, when a teacher is giving a mini lesson, they can use the information from this. It helps teachers match kids with independent reading books that are either at their independent or instructional level, and it's certainly a great progress monitoring tool, uh, because we use it over the course of time to see kids' growth, uh, both in terms of level, but also strategy, fluency, comprehension. I thought this slide would be helpful for the board in terms of what we look for. So these are the instructional levels for reading. Um, this is a chart that when most teachers refer to book levels, A to Z. Here, you can see, uh, below A is the beginning of the year for kindergarten, uh, all the way up until fifth grade. Uh, so these are the instructional levels that we use over the three ti- two to three times a year that we administer the BAS. Uh, this slide shows, um, how teachers can use the, uh, instructional levels of expectations or the BAS or the level reading system to assign books to kids. So if I'm a second-grade teacher and I'm looking for a nonfiction text for my students, I can align them to, uh, nonfiction texts about sloths, if that's what they're interested in. Or, um, same thing here, um, a fiction text hatchet, a chapter book, whether that's independent reading or we're going to read it in a group in guided reading. This is one of the ways that this tool is utilized, um, across the district at the elementary level. So again, if you take, uh, this, I'm just going to go backwards to go forwards, this chart here, if you go by the end of the year and the expectations and the little, I'm sorry, not little color-coded chart. This next chart is, um, the percent based on last year that, uh, met or are above the instructional levels for, um, their graded level based on the BAS. And you can see the district-wide results going across there. Um, so certainly, if you look back at that chart, we want a certain grade at a certain letter, but if you're below that letter, you're not included in this. If you're approaching, you're not included in this. It's percent at or above the expected level. Uh, the next two slides are district-wide slides. I was trying to, um, give information on our English language learners. I apologize here. This is in a large file. Uh, the title should say 19-year ELL growth pattern. It populates the bottom part, but not the title. So what you see here is, I added last year's 1819 on the far right. Uh, we see an increase in active number of ELL students. Active means they scored less than a certain score on our screener. So if a parent, uh, when they register, fills out a form saying they speak another language and they agree to ELL services, uh, they would go into active status. You see the monitored number of students. Again, if they score over a certain score on the Weta Access Text Test, we keep them in active status over the course of time. And while this green, uh, part, speaking to staff, says 1819, I'm sure the board's aware that we added, um, we're fortunate to add five new ELL teachers this year, and they were assigned to Nashua North, Nashua South, Bicentennial, Elm Street, and a shared position between, um, Fairgrounds Middle and Penechuk. So we're up to 29 ELL teachers. Again, I apologize. The, this, the title should be 19-year ELL growth pattern because we added 1819, but you can see an increase of, um, 21 total ELL students and a decrease of 15 monitored students. Um, and that goes back to that piece of the standard of that test. We have less kids, uh, coming out of, um, testing out, if you will. So these next few slides are about our I-Ready Assessment, which is a diagnostic and interim assessment. You'll see some of the slides that we spoke about last time, um, along with some new slides. I tried to, uh, make it as clear as possible, so we'll see how I did. Uh, this gives an explanation and purpose. We use it in grades one to five, three times a year, fall, winter, spring. You can see what it assesses and how we use the data. The big thing I want to point out with this one, uh, assessment as compared to one later on, it is adaptive. So it does go climb the ladder from first grade all the way to eighth grade, unlike one of our other assessments. So, um, the student works through a series of questions that are adaptive to pinpoint the exact level that they're at. So I know there's been some talk, uh, around proficiency and growth, so I'm going to walk through this example as a means to help us frame the next couple of slides. This slide is an example of a third-grade math, uh, results showing projected score gains by the end of the year based on their fall placement. So if you're this, we're going to use this as a scenario. If you're a third-grader and you place one level below, you would need to make, in typical growth, I can't see that as well, plus 26 or 28 points to be on level, but that would put you on the beginning of third grade. So the stretch growth would be plus 36 so that you're completely on level mid to end of the year. So I'd ask that you keep those in mind as we look at the next couple of slides. And this is a new, um, graphic provided to us by, uh, I-Ready Curriculum Associates. So we're going to look at math first. Uh, this is a slide that we saw last time. So in I-Ready Math, we look at numbers and operations, algebra, multiplication and division, geometry. Again, uh, grades one to five. So I tried to rearrange the slide for you, uh, working chronologically, fall to spring. Looking fall to spring, you can see, uh, a decrease of 12% of students at risk in Tier 3, that are two or more grade levels behind. A decrease of 14% of students in and at risk for Tier 2, which is early-on grade level and a grade level below, and an increase of 26% of students in Tier 1, mid and on grade level or above. So, um, less students in red, more students in green. Again, we saw this slide from last time. This is, um, district results, grades, uh, one to eight. Um, I tried to put a legend in here so you could see the domains that are being assessed. Um, and again, uh, placement by domain throughout the district for numbers and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, geometry, and measurement of data. So again, looking back at our growth chart or kind of our proficiency and growth diagram, the orange here, the line across, is annual growth, and this is the median percent of typical growth. So the typical growth that we saw earlier around the numbers to get to early-on grade level, um, our students in grades one through five are exceeding that and have a higher, um, percent of typical growth over the annual growth number. Again, this was the chart that we saw last time. This is a, uh, district chart just for grades one through eight, I mean, one to five. Um, so this shows typical growth by placement, a median percent of typical growth. So for example, if you're in first grade, mid or on grade level, there are 29 students they needed to make 21 points of typical growth, and that's 114% of growth, um, towards their placement. This next chart is a, uh, next slide, excuse me, is a new slide. Uh, we had a request for seeing all the data, fall, winter, and spring. So this new slide's titled, uh, Grade Level Performance of Elementary Schools in Math Across the Three Diagnostic Periods, Fall, Winter, Spring. And what you can see here is a higher percent of students performing on grade level, so these grade level bands are increasing over time, and a decrease of students performing two or more grade levels below. So this, again, this red part decreasing in time. Certainly, math, uh, I-Ready is a useful tool, um, but it certainly has its limitations. It's one data source. It's a snapshot of performance. It's certainly very technology-based. It's multiple-choice format. There's a limited, uh, DO-K model, uh, levels. We call that depth of knowledge, so, uh, limited in rigor. Um, and it does require a degree of student attention, focus, enduring, endurance, and teacher monitoring, because, um, students at the younger levels to get rewarded with some game time, um, that can be an incentive, but it also can be a distraction to, uh, play the game and not give your best effort towards the questions that matter. So action steps for math, based on some of these results. Uh, we're going to continue review, consistently reviewing academic performance using a balanced assessment framework. Meet with our district data team. Review the school data with the building administrators. Uh, we're working to design high-quality, high-leverage assessments across the district, grade, classroom, school, and district. We're going to be working with our mass steering committees and working on some quality performance assessments, which I'll talk a little bit about, um, at a ladder, later slide. And I would, um, continue to advocate for the support of an elementary math peer coach. That's a new position this year. Um, we were able to fund that with some grant support. Um, and I would say I met with them today, and the teachers are, uh, happy to have that level of support. But I would certainly like to continue that, if not add additional positions. Uh, these next slides are our I-Ready performance. Again, in I-Ready Reading, we assess phonemic awareness, high-frequency words, vocabulary, phonics, uh, comprehension on literature, and informative text. Again, I tried to rearrange the slide so that it goes from fall to spring, and here you can see, uh, based on the results, grades one to eight, a decrease in the number of students at risk, a decrease in the number of students at risk for Tier 2, and an increase of students, um, 19% in Tier 1. Just as we looked before, this is district results for diagnostic results of fall and spring comparison, a distribution of students in tier from fall and spring by domain. So I added a legend here so that you could see phonologic awareness, high-frequency words, phonics, vocabulary, literature, um, and informational text. Both these last two are comprehension strands. Similar slide to before around, um, grades one to five and their typical growth by grade. And again, you can see our students exceeding annual growth goals, um, based on their median percent of typical growth, grades one to five. Again, this is a new slide. We're, again, responding to the request for seeing all three, um, interim assessments. So this is grade level performance of elementary schools in ELA and reading across the three diagnostics, fall, winter, and spring. And again, you can see higher percent of students performing on grade level, so these green bands, um, increasing with students performing on grade level, and a decrease of students performing two or more grade levels below. And lastly, the similar slide that we saw in math, we see again in reading, grades one to eight, uh, their median percent of typical growth achieved by the fall placement level. So here, you can see it broken out by the levels, um, and the percent of students, the number of students, and the points they needed for typical growth. Um, so, again, read, uh, I-Ready is a, uh, a useful tool, but it's not like anything else just completely perfect. It's a, uh, a data source. It's a snapshot. We talked about technology. We do struggle with the connection to our curriculum, both in math and reading. This product is made across the standards and used in a variety of states, so it's not completely aligned to our curriculum, but it does provide insight into, um, performance against the standards. I believe a number of these we spoke about in our last slide. Not to sound like a broken record again, but I'm just going to highlight advocating for, uh, support for an elementary literacy peer coach. Uh, that's a new position this year. That's been very helpful for teachers. And we'll be meeting with the Language Arts Committee, and I'll talk about the, uh, performance assessments, um, at a latter slide. I believe at our last meeting, we talked about Performance Plus. Um, I've gone to two Data Dive workshops from the New Hampshire Department of Education with some administrators and teachers, and we're going to attend some more sessions throughout the year. But this is an example of a report from Performance Plus. It's called a NE2 scatter plot, and with it, you can compare any two assessments that were taken by the same students. So this report is a comparison of student performance along the bottom of, um, the New Hampshire Student Assessment System across their I-Ready performance. Um, and what I found interesting about this slide was that these red boxes here, I know a lot of products and companies say they're, uh, aligned or, uh, have a high correlation to the Common Core standards. If they were perfectly aligned, and I certainly, we're dealing with kids and variables, their performance should align right across here. So there is some, um, disparity between the two assessments there. So what it's basically saying is, if you do really well in I-Ready, it's not necessarily a predictor that you're going to do very well in the SAS. The SAS is a, quite a challenging test, and we're going to talk about that in, um, actually in our next section. Uh, these slides speak to the New Hampshire SES, we call it. Um, so students in grades three through eight in the spring, once a year, take a summative assessment, uh, you know, in ELA, math, and possibly science, depending on the grade level that they're in. Um, I want to call the board's attention to this first part here, adaptive summative assessment aligned to Common Core. Please note, when they say adaptive, it's not like I-Ready where it goes from this basement to the ceiling, grades one to eight. It's only adaptive within the grade band. So if you're a third-grade student, you're seeing third le- third-grade standards the whole time. You're not going up and down that ladder. It's all third grade from start to finish. So all it's trying to do, and I'll talk about that in another slide, is to see where you fit in those four proficiency levels. Um, so you can see here what it assesses, the subject areas, and how we use, um, the data. And certainly, we talked in our last meeting about, um, how it's used for, um, state and federal accountability in terms of, uh, schools' performance. After serving as an elementary assistant principal, I just wanted the board to know the amount of time that it takes a young person to take these assessments. You're looking at at least, uh, six hours of testing with a Chromebook if you are in grades, uh, three and four. If you're in fifth grade, uh, bad news, you're going to take another two hours, or you're up to eight hours, um, of assessment, which doesn't include any time at the bottom there for computer, loading the browser, breaks, logging in the students. So it's about a day and a half for our young kids, uh, taking a, assessment with a Chromebook, maneuvering the technology. So like I said two slides ago, this is what this assessment is looking to do, based on performance within the grade band, where does the student, uh, demonstrate performance? Are they highly proficient, above grade level, significantly above, engages in higher-level thinking skills? Independently, to a student who's below proficient, is likely able to partially access grade-level content with extensive support. So over time, the adaptive test that they're taking for the six to eight hours is looking to see where do they fall, level four to one. Uh, this slide shows an overall performance of, um, performance in ELA and reading from last year, uh, grades three, four, and five. And we're just going to break out each grade level in the next couple of slides. Excuse me. So this is our ELA, uh, grade three summative, um, performance. And if you read, again, it, this is the way it's laid out, from left to right, 31% below proficient, 24% above, approaching proficiency, 27% and 19% above proficient, which the 27 and 19 gives you this 46 right here. Same thing, left to right, grade four, 33 below, 20 approaching, 27 proficient, 20% And grade five, 27% below, 20% approaching, 34% proficient, and 19% above proficient. This next slide, I thought it would be helpful in seeing the trends over time, a five-year review. Uh, as you know, this is the third year of the Student Assessment System, which changed. We used to be in, um, the Smarter Balance Consortium, so you can see our scores over time. I think this slide, uh, shows our performance over time. Our third-grade students did very well last year. You can see the other grade levels. I think this view is particularly helpful when we get to the science section. Um, as we looked at before, these slides, this slide speaks to, uh, overall performance in grades three, four, and five for math, the number of students tested, and the percent proficient. This slide and the other slide that you looked at include, proficient includes students that are proficient and above proficient. As we look at, uh, gra- uh, graph, that's when you add math in grade three together, uh, 23% below proficient, 21% are twenty-three percent below proficient, twenty-one percent approaching, thirty-two percent proficient, and twenty-four percent above proficient, giving you fifty-six percent of our students proficient in grade-three math. Looking at our fourth grade specifically, again, twenty-seven below, twenty-seven approaching, twenty-eight proficient, and eighteen percent above, giving the forty-six percent proficiency. Grade-five math tests from last year, thirty below, twenty-six approaching, nineteen percent proficient, and twenty-five percent above proficient. Again, this slide is a five-year overview, going from SBACK to SAS. You can see the scores over time. Again, our third grade did very well, increased last year, and similar results over the seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen school year. So this is science for grade five. This is the second year that they moved the science assessment to fifth grade. It used to be in fourth grade in the Kneecap or SBACK days. So we had nine hundred and eleven kids take the test, thirty-four percent proficient. I'm going to speak to that in a moment. Again, here's a more comprehensive breakdown of percent of students in each achievement level. So you're looking at forty-three percent below proficient, twenty-three approaching, twenty-two proficient, and twelve percent above. This is the slide I referenced earlier. You can see what the change in the test has done in science. We were doing fairly well in Kneecap. They were releasing items. They left the materials when the kids took the test. We were able to run demonstrations for students and get them used to what the test was going to be like. Now that they switched grades into fifth grade, again, that gives the kids the two hours of being on a computer with a Chromebook, watching videos, and answering multiple-choice questions as opposed to what they used to do before. So I think part of the challenge of the test is we don't get to see the released items. We don't get to see student error analysis, the questions they got wrong, any of the questions. We see sample ones, whereas before with Kneecap, we got all the materials. We'd bring the kids in the cafeteria. We would run them through the similar simulations. It certainly helped a lot. Now they're, again, with the Chromebooks for two hours, watching a video and answering science questions, which to me is not really fun science. Science should be hands-on. I thought these next slides would be helpful in terms of comparing the district with similar profiles in New Hampshire. I work with Don Miller in looking at some districts that had similar, you know, number of students, SES background, class size, disabilities, ELL students. So we range from Concord all the way to Rochester. And I'm just going to speak to the grades three, four, and five results. But if you look through the results, our grade-three ELA results are higher in percentages than Laconia and Manchester and equal to Rochester. Higher than Laconia and Manchester, higher than Laconia and Manchester in four and five ELA. Our grade-three math has a higher percentage of students than Concord, Laconia, and Manchester. Our grade-four, oops, sorry. Our grade-four ELA has a higher percentage than Laconia and Manchester, Rochester. The same with grade-five in ELA, a higher percentage than Laconia and Manchester. So I think this is a helpful comparison and giving a complete picture to the range of our performance against some similar districts that have the similar challenges we do. Certainly, some are a little bit smaller and some are a little bit bigger. But it gives you a rate of comparison. Along with this next slide, which I think is very helpful. I know there were concerns last time in terms of the number of schools that have been identified for additional support under federal accountability. So we took those five districts with similar profiles in New Hampshire and gave you the number of elementary schools, the number of additional targeted schools or ATS schools, and a number of CSI schools. And you can see the proportion of elementary schools identified as needing additional support. We tried to give you a percentage. Do you have some way of comparing the districts? Although some, one district had a middle school and some only have, you know, a quarter of the number of elementary schools that we have. But I think what this slide shares with you is that SAS test, along with the Ever-Eat Student Succeeds Act from federal accountability to the state, a lot of this results in that performance of that assessment is used to identify schools as whether they need additional targeted support or if they don't come out of there in two years, they're going to move into comprehensive support and improvement. So as I said earlier, we're fortunate to have the strategic plan, which outlines goals to increase and monitor student academic growth in utilizing building-based and district-wide supports. So one of our goals for this year is forming building-based instructional leadership teams. I met with my assistant principals today. I'm meeting with the elementary principals tomorrow. We have a district admin meeting tomorrow afternoon, and we'll be speaking to that. Part of the goal of those teams is to have monthly meetings, have conversations around professional development, be a conduit to central office, form SEL subcommittees, and identify the needs of all kids and really help define a matrix around what student growth looks like across the district. Just like I advocated for the peer coach, I would continue to advocate for equity in our full-day kindergarten program. One of the action items in the strategic plan is revising our curriculum management plan. That's been out of date for a little bit of time and needs to be revised. I would advise the board to keep advocating for high-quality curriculum materials along with high-quality PD. And I'll say it again, I would advocate for ongoing support for elementary peer coaches. I just want to point out, as we talked earlier about our science performance and the change in the grade levels, we are taking proactive steps to improve student performance in science. We do have an elementary science peer coach. We're working on giving them the next-gen science, three-dimensional professional development. We're also working on a pilot of mystery science. And our science peer coach has actually networked and joined, I would say, three to four other districts that are in a similar place to us that are trying to figure out what's the best next step in elementary in terms of getting a curriculum that works for teachers who are very busy and are more, well, more invested or more trained in math in ELA. But also, how do we do the next-gen PD in a way that works for all of us? So it's nice to have partners who are collaborating and sharing with other districts. And I look forward to reporting on how that goes later in the year. Again, in our strategic plan, it talks about academic growth and district-wide supports. One of our goals this year is continue to work building competency-based education, preschool or K to 12. As you know, we have them at the high school. We have standards-based screening at the elementary. We're taking steps forward with middle school. I think it would be nice for our parents and students if we were all aligned and talking in the same kind of talk in terms of grading and assessment. So some of the things we've done, Ms. Fitzpatrick and I went to a lot of PD over the summer. We're sending principals to a school retool, which is around competency-based education. We're going to be working to form a district-wide team. We took teachers and administrators to the CBE 360, which is a research-based tool that we can use to survey not only students but teachers on CBE practices. So if teachers were to say, "We're really doing it," but the kids say, "I'm still getting lectured to for fifty-five minutes," that would be a problem. So we can use the results to kind of validate the practices that are happening across the district. And we'll be working to begin developing some different assessments and different types of assessments across the district. We're actually hosting one of the Quality Performance Assessment Institutes. It's a four-day training. We're hosting it in district. We're one of the five sites across the state that is holding such trainings for teachers and administrators. I know I advocated for peer coaches in kindergarten, but we're all very busy people. And I'm here to advocate for additional consistent weekly time for grade-level professional learning communities for collaboration, data-driven decision-making, and professional development. This shows the 12 schools and how many of them have time for their teachers at a grade level to come together, talk about assessments, collaborate. And as you can see, it ranges from weekly to biweekly, monthly, even longer than that. And based on a number of readings, and if you read anything about professional learning communities, if teachers have dedicated time on a weekly basis where they can sit, share practices, look at results, and execute them, student achievement moves accordingly. So certainly advocating for this is one thing. It certainly has implications in terms of, you know, contract negotiations, budget, time. But our teachers, I think, at the elementary level do a lot. They're very hard-working, good-natured people who do a lot with, I would say, a little. So this was a slide from one of our PD offerings this summer, talking about competency-based education and why we want to do this. So it talks about taking a shift from being test takers on a Chromebook to 21st-century thinkers. And you think about the top skills that are needed in the job market these days. Employers are asking for complex problem-solving, critical thinking, creativity, decision-making, beyond rote memorization or passing standardized tests. The assessments we're going to design are quality performance assessments that get kids engaged, not with a Chromebook, not watching videos, but connect to real-world problems that they're going to do that are standardized, and teachers work together to assess them on a common rubric. We've had performance tasks in the past for some of our units, and you may have heard that term. This is kind of similar to those, but one step forward. Certainly, if we were to move forward in that direction and become a PACE district, which we'll talk about in the next slide, we talked about the six to eight hours that kids would be testing. We could drastically reduce the time that kids are in front of a Chromebook and taking standardized tests. This is an example of kids in a district who only take it in, you can see over here, third-grade ELA and fourth-grade math. So they would go from six hours down to just two with a combination of these local performance assessments and the PACE assessments, which we'll talk about in the next slide. So we're fortunate that New Hampshire has kind of this alternative accountability system that was approved by the federal government. It reduces the level of standardized testing along with developing locally developed common performance assessments. You can see here how they are given across the middle, elementary, and high schools. In all of the years, they deliver these assessments that are developed by districts, but they have to be validated at the state level. So our content leads would have to work together with other content leads, like, for example, third-grade math getting together and agreeing, sending it up to the state and saying this is a valid assessment. I know we spent a lot of time talking about academics and assessments, but fortunately, our mission is to educate the whole child and to empower student success. And I would ask the board for its support and continued support in cultivating a safe and nurturing learning environment. We're taking steps to form a district-wide SEL task force, identifying PD in SEL, trauma-sensitive classrooms, and cultural competencies. We approved the pilot of Choose Love, the SEL program in grades K to five, which has been well-received. I would say about half our schools at the elementary level are actively participating in the pilot. And we've had some great presentations from ambassadors from the state. One new, two new things I'd like to share with the board is down the bottom here, our UDL training. We have three teams participating and a free PD opportunity from the State Department of Education, particularly around its special education department. We have one elementary team. We have a middle school team. And we have a high school team, combined with our CTE and ELL departments. And UDL is really about removing barriers for learning and not making learning a one-way street. I'm sure we can all remember a teacher who wanted information presented their way. This is professional development in removing those barriers so that all kids can succeed. So we're participating in that. We meet two hours a month. And we go to the state network meetings. And then we'll be conducting instructional rounds and visiting classrooms and looking for some of those good practices that are helpful to all kids. Lastly, on this slide, I'd ask the board to continue supporting full-time assistant principals at all the elementary schools. You know, we need to have good principals to have good schools, and great teachers like to work for good principals and stay there and learn and grow. We've had, certainly, our hands full with student behavior and challenges. And if we support the learning environment, I think we'll be on a road to better and higher results. So I thank you for your time. I know that was a number of slides. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. I want to welcome Ms. Raymond, who joined us at 5:50, and Dr. Mosley at 6:05. Thank you for that presentation. I think it does a nice job of putting our texting, our testing in the context of learning, in a bigger picture of what our students are going through. I think it does a nice job of telling what the district is doing to address the test scores. I know that that's been a question before. And clearly, there's quite a lot that's going on to improve test scores. And as you mentioned, in our strategic plan, the first goal is to increase academic performance for all students. So thank you for a comprehensive presentation. So I'm thinking... For taking questions, why don't we do it in chunks? So if we look at the first part of the presentation, we have the strategic plan and the district goals. Dr. McKinney gave us an assessment inventory of all the tests that are given to elementary students. Are there any questions on that particular part, the beginning?
Pages are you referencing?
So, Dr. McKinney, if you can go up to this last page right here. So in the beginning, so if you go back, we have our introduction. Okay. Yep. So right, so in the beginning, we have the district goals. And we also have this inventory of tests. So are there any questions on this part?
Up to page three.
Up to page three. I don't think the pages are numbered.
They're not numbered.
Okay. So we're up, so that's why I'm going to take it in chunks. Ms. Van Twyver.
I just have a question. Would you refresh my memory about the early literacy assessment? Is that part of Fountas and Pennell? Or the Benchmark Assessment System?
Yes. Those are the optional assessments that are in the back of the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System. And we use those to create the early literacy assessments when the RSA came out two or three years ago.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Dr. McKinney, if you go to the next title slide, early literacy assessments. I think it's the next one. Okay. On this section, which has our Fountas and Pennell. Yes, all the way up to the English Language Learner. So on this particular section, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I did number my pages. So on page eight, which is on, which is the next page. So you talked about the screening. So you talked about the screenings required by the RSA. You mentioned you do them for all kindergarten students and only new students entering first grade. Did I, did I actually remember that? I think I'm pretty close on that one.
Yes.
Okay, so my question has to do with, what about students who come in and come in at higher grade, three, four, five? We have students coming in the district at all different grade levels. So what do we do for somebody who comes into middle school? What do we do in the other elementary grades? What do we do for someone who even enters at high school? How, what kind of screenings occur at those other levels?
So if a new student were to come at the elementary level, we certainly look at the CUEM record and see what records are there, look at previous performance. If we have options in there to have them take the I-Ready assessment, sometimes it takes a day or two to get the accounts set up for them. We give them the BAS to learn their reading level if that's not the case. And then certainly, we can give the optional assessments that are in the back of the BAS as needed. The chat teams at the building levels are the ones that supervise student performance. So if a new student were to come in and be struggling, that would be the team that would be working to mitigate the problem. I don't know if that answers your question, but there's a variety of assessments that we could give here, but we don't have a, you know, welcome to National Research, a new student assessment we're going to give you. We use the ones that we have here, and then also go back and ask the district, or what's in the CUEM record on previous student performance.
Actually, you have answered my question. Thank you. It was just, your presentation only addressed those two instances.
Oh, yep.
And didn't, your answer is fine.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear, but you didn't mention, you only mentioned the initial grades and not the other arrivals, and I was just curious about that.
Yeah, this one was in particular response to that RSA, saying that we had to have a screener for dyslexia at the younger grades.
So I have another question for the next page. Yeah, the split one. So, and this is my question for just about everything in here, is what are we doing to specifically help those 27% at the end of the school year before they go to the next Because is this how we start creating our Tier One, Tier Two students? In other words, we, you know, they started the year, by the end of the year, there's been some improvement, but they're still not meeting the expectation of proficiency, irrespective of growth. Okay, because, and I'm sorry, I understand, for me, growth is an individual thing, and I understand, and even the example that Mr. Marku gave us the last time, he had a student that would probably never achieve proficiency, but that student could demonstrate growth in certain areas based upon our helping them. That's great. But my concern is, I, I look at proficiency, because that's where, that's where, for me, that's where the rubber meets the road in the investment. And so what do we do for this 27% who have not met expectations? How many of them are Tier One, Tier Two, by, Tier Three by grade? And, and this question, you're going to hear from me multiple times. It goes across every slide you gave us. When you talk about proficiency at 46%, or 34%, or 50, whatever percent, I'm going to ask you about the other half. Because ultimately, I want to know who's creating the, and maybe this is the overall question, who's creating the student-specific remedial plans? Is it the classroom teacher? You mentioned the teams, and they are evaluating, and I know, at least from my experience of subbing, the, the middle school is really a team, you know, the disciplines are in a team, whatever animal, or whatever they pick. But you have ELA, you have math, you have science, you have various teachers who see those kids all day. So I guess, let me see if you can answer that question.
All right, so can we just keep it to this assessment and just speak to the elementary level?
Sure.
This assessment, part of the RSA is part parent notification, so this is the form that they have to give parents by, it's not on your, it's not in the packet, I'm just speaking to it, that they, the teacher has to give the parent notification of how the child did. In the beginning, it is the teacher's responsibility to intervene and design classroom instruction around that. Now, this is not a big lift. This first kindergarten letter naming and letter sound is a variety of letters, and whether or not the student can identify them, and then say what sound they make. You'll see paraprofessionals sitting with kids all the time and reviewing this with them. So specifically to this assessment, those are some of the things that happen. The benefit of this assessment, it goes K and 1. I would not assign a kid a tier based on one assessment at one time and say, you're only in this tier for instruction. We believe in the growth mindset, we believe in not yet, so with hard work and persistent effort, many kids can achieve the expectations. So they're monitored over time, and again, it's part of that school-based chat team to be looking at these results. And when I go and visit schools every week on Fridays, I want to hear about, what are you doing to intervene on the kids? I would say, on a global scale, the challenge for many schools is the same challenge as we have district-wide. They need additional personnel. Title schools have additional resources that the non-title schools might not have. So they do work in the tiers and try to remediate. Does that answer your, your questions?
Yeah, I want to touch on something. I think it's going to come at the board level. I'll be asking Ms. Raymond to put this on the next agenda. But we have, apparently, there's going to be what I call a windfall amount of money coming to the district. And I'm not going to mention the number because we haven't been officially notified of the number. But there's going to be a chunk of money from the state education. There's $138 million that the governor and legislator approved that is targeted to one-time spending essentially in education. Nash was going to get some...
Well, let's stop, let's stop the meeting and start talking about the money, then.
Well, I, that's why I said I'd like to bring that up. But I, but my question is, I'm not, I don't want to get into detail, but I do want to pursue this. So time and money, or people and money tutoring can fix this? That's really my question. And I want to get you thinking, because we don't know how much we're going to get and how we're going to allocate it, because there's different things the district needs that the board has to figure out. But please, start thinking about, how do, how do I, maybe, you know, K and 1, you're less concerned about the expectations, and I get that. You let the kids, you know, mature into it.
No, I'm not.
Excuse me?
No, I'm not. I'm less concerned about the expectations? Is that what you just said? I'm not?
I did, I did say that, because that's the feeling I got from what you said.
I'm concerned about, I, I don't appreciate that. I'm concerned about all the results, not just...
Okay.
So what is the point of what you're trying to make?
What I, what I thought I heard was, don't, what I thought I heard was, don't worry, this will work itself out. That's sort of what I heard.
I don't believe, I don't believe that to be a fair depiction.
Okay, I'm just telling you what I got from your comment. So, but my point is, please, start thinking about what, we're going to have money to throw at a problem, multiple problems. One of them, in my mind, is remediation. So if, that's why my question is targeted, to ask you guys to start thinking about how much resource do you need to get our kids to expectations? And for me, it's proficiency, it's not the growth expectation. It's, it's up to what we think is, what I understand to be grade level. Now, I do have another question, if you want to go to someone else.
Could we give some other people some chance to ask questions?
Follow-up on this 27%?
Not the money, right?
No.
All right, all right, Ms. Van Twyver.
Do we know of the 27% that did not meet expectations, whether it was because they have a learning disability, or they just haven't had enough training, or enough attention to making, you know, the sounds and whatever like that? Do we have any kind of data on that? Is it even determined at this level, whether they have a learning disability? I mean, I might not be so unhappy if I knew that 27% had learning disabilities and, and you know, we're going to make smaller moves, growth. But if it's 27 average student, I'd be concerned about that.
I don't have that data with me, and I would just say that we are, you know, one city, one district, with one set of goals and a strategic plan, and we're all working and rowing in the same direction. I, I am uncomfortable identifying kids and saying that there's a lower expectation. Certainly, if they have their own challenges, the chat teams at the building work tirelessly to design interventions to have kids be successful. That success may look different for different kids. In the early grades, we do give kids the gift of time. We don't rush to identify them right away unless there's significant level of concerns. So I would just say, in this regard, the 27%, it could be two or three students who are two or three levels behind, and within the first three months of first grade, they're on expectations. So again, this is one assessment, a snapshot in time, our youngest students, learning their letters, learning their sounds, learning rhyming, learning how to do school 180 days for six-plus hours a day.
So you're saying that this district does not maintain any kind of data on, on kindergarten 27% not meeting requirements?
Again, that's not at all what I said. I said, I'm uncomfortable sharing it in this forum. Do schools keep track of all this? Do we know overall, you see district-level assignment of how many kids are economically disadvantaged, how many kids are on IEP? We know all of those things. I'm just giving you a snapshot of district performance over time. We are one district, working towards one goal with all the resources we have.
Ms. Raymond?
Thanks. I just wanted to respond to Ms. Van Twyver's question, because I've been doing the tours of the schools. I know Mr. Kaufman went with one school with me, and one of the things that I found really interesting in touring the schools was that some of, of our entrance, our kindergarten students who are coming in, in first grade, because some families don't do kindergarten, coming in, some of those students already come with an IEP because they were identified through early intervention and then referred to the school district. But some kids come in unknown to the district, and so it's over the first few months of kindergarten that the district starts to say, hey, this child isn't performing as other students were, or how we would like, and maybe we need to talk to the parents about scheduling evaluations. And that process can take some time, because you have to get parent buy-in, and you have to, you know, go through the process of getting evaluations to see if they qualify for IEPs. In the meantime, the kindergarten teachers and pairs are providing what support they can, but I had a number of interesting conversations with school principals about the challenges, the unique challenges of kindergarten in first grade regarding identifying where kids are and what's kind of going on with them. You know, because we have a lot of kids who come in with a number of things going on, from homelessness, to poverty, to drug use, to special needs that haven't been identified, that the school just doesn't know until we know. Like, does that make sense?
Oh, it doesn't to me.
Because we're...
You're telling me that they do make an assessment of whether they, these children have IEPs when they come into first grade?
What I'm saying is, some children come in with IEPs already established because their parents sought them prior to kindergarten.
I would just like to know if the district has that data. I'm not asking for it.
Yes.
I'm just asking, do you keep a record of that?
Yes, the district knows how many...
Asking.
...come in with that. And then there's also a number who get them once they're here.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I'm just going to inform the board that, at the beginning of the year, the number of students in kindergarten this year that may meet expectations may not look like that number. I'm hearing from the principals, this cohort of kindergarten students are particularly challenging. We still have students on October 7th who are having challenges separating from their parents because they haven't been in a school environment, so they're missing an hour or two of instruction and being upset, and it impacts the entire day. So that's what it looks like for some of our five-year-olds in October coming to school. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ho Hensy.
Thank you. I'm just asking about this end-of-year expectation. You said that you didn't think this was heavy lifting, it's just letters, sounds, rhyming. I thought kindergarten, they taught them to read by the end of the year, so isn't that included?
Yes, it is included. It's not included in this particular assessment. In the BAS that we spoke of earlier, it shows the levels over time, and I'm just trying to bring up that slide, the color-coded chart that shows our kindergarten students, we want them reading above a Level C at the end of the year. So I think you're, you may be confusing the two different assessments, but...
Okay, but it's just, your description, so you're saying this assessment doesn't touch on reading, even though that's one of the standards for kindergarten?
It's a screener, it's not necessarily aligned to the standards.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is...
I would be happy if they lowered the standards for kindergarten, because they used to be lower, and I, I think to address Ms. Van Twyver's concern, I think students develop cognitively at different ages. So you can't, or it would be harmful to code the kids too early when it, just physiologically, they're not there. Not that they're deficient with what tools they've got, they're still maturing. So I'm glad we're taking our time, better to go slow and easy. So that's what I was just trying to clarify, whether this include, this 73% does not include reading. I'm, I'm curious, what percentage of our kindergarten kids do read?
Oh, we'll get to that.
Is that in here? I mean, we've covered...
Right there.
That's 53% of kindergarten students reading at a Level C or above by the end of the year.
So half of them, a little more than half?
On average.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Timmons, are you there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Do you have any, do you have any questions or comments so far?
No, I think Dr. McKinney did a wonderful job. I followed his lights pretty easily. I understand exactly what he's talking about. I have no concerns right now. From what I see and what I hear and what I experience, he's right on target. Thank you, Dr. McKinney.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Thank you, for this slide. So the students that did not meet expectations are obviously 47, 45, 35, 34, et cetera. Now, you said that you don't classify deficiencies, grade levels, Tier One, Tier Two, for the kindergarten students. So I get that, that makes sense. When do you start, when do students get, and I'm going to use the word identified, not in the special education identified context, but when do, when do you start observing and keeping track of students who are behind some amount of grade level and get the T1, 2, 3, or whatever assigned to them? When, when in elementary school does that start?
I mean, I guess I'm a little confused on your question. Could you just repeat it one more time?
Sure. So I'm trying to figure out, when do we start declaring a student to be a grade behind, or two grades behind, or even three grades behind? Because I know the goal, I mean, as crazy as this board has been, the one thing we did agree on previously was we wanted, we wanted proficiency all across the board by grade three. Okay? So when do we start labeling our students Tier One, Two, or Three deficient? When would a student be one grade behind? Is that in second grade because of the first-grade experience? I'm just trying to understand when we start.
According to the I-Ready thing.
So I'm, I'm not invested in labeling students. What I'm invested in is helping students succeed, both academically and the whole child.
Okay.
So can I finish?
Yeah.
So when the students take this assessment, the parents are informed of the assessment. They get notified on at least four times a year with a progress report and a report card. The chat teams at the buildings determine the interventions that would help those children succeed. So whether they do get a 504 plan and meet criteria, whether they're assigned a series of interventions for four to six, eight weeks, report back to the chat team to see if they're making progress, or if they're begin the referral process for testing for an IEP. Certainly, there are a number of factors that go into student achievement. Some are within the school walls, some are outside the school walls, so we work... Some are within the school walls, some are outside the school walls, so we work in a collaborative fashion with the parents, any resources across the city to put things in place to help kids succeed. Some kids have book bags, some kids don't have access to, you know, clothes, food, shelter, all those things. We try to meet the urgent needs before we get to the academic needs. So, we've worked to put together a system at the elementary schools, and we've worked to, for example, this BAS sheet, going to the middle schools, letting them know at the middle school level, and the teams, the performance of the students, not just with I-Ready, but with the BAS, so the teachers know from the beginning on day 1. In the classroom, if you're a kindergarten student, we use the end-of-the-year results for beginning instruction from day 1 for them, and then we assess them later on. We do running records to progress monitor them, so I don't think there's a, a sense that we don't know where the kids are, but certainly, if it comes to a point where we're running out of options, our seat administrators, our special education administrative team, they sit in on those meetings, they can help us brainstorm. So, I hope that gives you a picture of the interventions that we go through. I think if we were to become a competency-based system, K-12, I think what you're asking is, would there be opportunities at all levels for competency recovery, like we do now at the high school? And we would have to carefully consider what that would look like. Right now, we don't have, like, a standards mastery. If you don't meet the standard, how you do that, it's all within the context of the classroom, the grade, and the school. So, I would say we're probably two to three years away from getting to a fully established system like that.
So, well, I appreciate the detail on the interventions. That is absolutely helpful, and thank you. But my question is, see, I'm asking about T1, 2, and 3 students, because the data you give us uses that as a label and identifies and assigns a number, percentage of number of students that meet that criteria. So, I'm not making it up, you're reporting it. So, my question still remains, when do we start? What's the first year? Is it second grade that says a student is behind because they didn't meet the first-grade expectations? I wouldn't count kindergarten, and I could easily understand that, but I'm curious, so does someone coming into second grade could be, again, recorded as being behind one grade?
So, another point of information, when schools and classrooms and teachers make grade-level lists, they do report it out on some of those categories to make balanced classrooms for the following year. So, some of that information is provided.
And where does it start?
What is that?
What grade level does it start?
Well, after kindergarten. They have to go to first grade somewhere.
Okay, so first grade is already, there's some kind of an assessment from the BAS or whatever, that a student is where we want them to be, or not there quite yet?
Yep. I would just caution you in, the RTI framework, the Response to Instruction, is a framework around intervening for student success. So, Tier 1 is something that all teachers give. Tier 2 is a double dose when kids get another dose of instruction, and Tier 3 is typically special education. So, I hear you reporting out on those categories or labeling students, but we also look at it as, for example, in our title schools, you're present for reading and math, then you may go to a Tier 2 and get a double dose of reading and math, so we can accelerate growth, so you perform on a grade level. It doesn't mean that we're labeling you that way, it's just we're giving you what you need, when you need it, so you can do well in school.
So, so I can reinterpret this as saying if a number, what T2, how, students listed as a T2 student, that identifies the intensity of the remediation they would receive to help them either exhibit the growth or proficiency? Is, can I say it that way?
I prefer if you stated as the level of support.
Okay, the level of support that they receive. And Tier 2 is defined as a bunch of things, not, okay, all right. Well, that's very helpful, because I took it as the label intended, which said, "This student is one or more years, or two or more years behind."
Right.
I didn't accept, I didn't know what you had just said, that it identifies a level of support.
Right, so in math, Tier 1-
But you still have-
Tier 1 would be Eureka, you get Eureka math. Tier 2, you might come out and get some work on fluency ladders, we might use some other programs. In Tier 3 would be a different program, all designed around helping kids be fluency with their math facts, algebra, algebraic thinking, and all those things. In literacy, it would mean being there in the language arts block, coming out, getting some extra help and support around fluency, or word study, or any of those other key skills in reading and comprehension. Or in the higher kind of Tier 3, it might be Wilson, it might be Orton Gillingham, some specific programs that are designed to mediate certain disabilities or challenges kids have.
So, thank you. This, this explanation, four years on the board, and I finally get what Tier 1, 2, 3, et cetera are, and what it really means. I was obviously misinformed, well, never really had the level of detail that you just gave us, so I appreciate that.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Thank you. I just have a question. What are the pros and cons of separating the kids by level of, say, reading or math to alleviate the difficulty of a teacher juggling four or five levels in one classroom? I know you separate them so they all have a few that are maybe, that have more challenges than the other. Is there any advantages to separating them out and having a teacher deal with kids at a different, you know, more consistent homogeneous level than have them all mixed? Is it, is it practical to try to do? Is there any pros or cons why that's not being done? I'm trying to understand why we break them out.
I wouldn't say it's not being done. I would say guided reading is grouping kids by level and having those. That's particularly useful in the K to 2, K to 3 range. 4 and 5 would be book clubs, where you bring kids together, reading the same book on the same level, and taking on a variety of roles and responsibilities. There's certainly classrooms that do whole group readings, that's a shared reading, where they read the same text across. They do partner read, or small group readings, or readers theater, so they do a little bit of everything. The benefit of leveling kids by that assessment is, you get to have a predictable text with a format that kids know and understand, where you can target their skills, or target the instruction to meet their gaps. If they all had a variety of different texts or levels, it certainly would be challenging to do so. So-
Right.
I don't think we should be doing one thing all the time, just like balanced assessment. We should have balanced instruction in the classroom. We should be using all those formats across the board.
When I get a fifth-grade teacher that comes here to the board and says, "I've got kids that are reading at the kindergarten and first-grade level, all the way up to the eighth grade, and I'm teaching grade 5," what, if anything, can we do to alleviate the stress on teachers that are juggling the, you know, the very diverse populations they have in their school? Do we try to, to make them a little bit more similar in grouping, rather than just shuffle every different level into one grade?
I think the magic formula comes down to three things. I think the elementary literacy pilot is designated quality literacy resources that will help them pull kids in groups and have materials on hand for those three things. They certainly need more, and professional development have been asking for it. And the last would be the slide I talked about earlier in terms of time to collaborate. When good people come together, they, 90% of the time, they have the answers right in front of them, but the, the challenge you're talking about isn't just in literacy. Those same students are in front of them in math. They have a huge range of abilities in math, in all the subject areas. So, beyond that, they would be asking for additional support, paraprofessionals, and access to quality resources where they can design differentiated instruction for the kids, because-
I guess I'm not assuming that the teacher is deficient in knowing how to handle each of the different levels individually. I'm just wondering why we ask a single teacher to take a class that's, that's split among so many different levels? Why wouldn't we simplify her life and try to give her maybe one or two levels, give another teacher one or two levels, instead of each of them having five levels? I'm trying to understand, if she had a simple, you know, a more homogeneous grouping, it would be easier for her to focus on that level, whichever that level, and use the tools that we have at our disposal. But wouldn't it be, facilitate the teacher from working with, say, the whole group more, rather than dividing herself into four or five pieces, and putting the others sort of on remote, you know, working on their own while she goes around to each group individually?
Well, they do work independently, and there are grade levels that will move kids across the whole grade level to create smaller groups by level, but as I said earlier, I'm not interested in labeling and sorting and moving kids around. I do think having homogeneous groups of kids, it's beneficial at times, along with heterogeneous groups, so kids have mentors, have kids to look up to, have a different perspective. So, we do a little bit of both, but that's the challenge of teaching. You're never going to have all the kids coming through the door with the same strengths and weaknesses at the same time. That's part of the challenge of teaching, is meeting the range of learners that come through the door. And I think our teachers do-
That's true. I just don't remember when I was in school that there was such a disparity that I'm hearing reported. So, I'm just trying to simplify the teachers' load, so they could work more efficiently with the students that are in front of them, is, you know?
So, Ms. Raymond?
Thanks. It's, I think it's an interesting question, and it, it goes to some of our policies and surrounding our philosophies on education here in the district. If you look at our policy on elementary education philosophies versus middle school versus high school, we have, I forget what the numbers are, but we have three policies on these. And our elementary ed policy specifically says that we use heterogeneous grouping in elementary, that we use homogeneous grouping in middle and high school. And this came up last year, because there's a discussion about, do we switch from homogeneous to flexible in middle school for the 21st century learning model? And I, I don't know that that question was tabled last year, but as far as elementary ed, I believe the policy committee and then the board reaffirmed our policy on heterogeneous grouping in the middle, in the elementary school level. And so, I think, if I recall correctly, when we had that conversation, there was a lot of research showing benefits to students on all different levels of, of skill levels to being exposed to that diversity. Now, I think arguments can be made either way, but it would be a question to go to the policy committee and maybe take a look at that policy and get feedback from students, not students, teachers, if that's something that the board wants to consider in the future.
I think those things are addressed in the strategic plan through the instructional leadership teams at each building. Their task is to look at how students in their buildings are doing, and to have that time to work together, to come up with different ways, maybe out-of-the-box ways, to kind of address those issues. So, I think that, I know I've said this before, but the purpose of the strategic plan is to put a structure in place where these conversations can take place and work their way up through to administration, so that we have a really organic way. We have the people who are with, in the classrooms, with the teachers, not that they don't have a voice now, they do. I'm not saying that they don't, but this gives, okay, so, but this gives a, a, a formal structure to that process. So, we have at the building level, teachers and administrators talking about these issues, meeting with administrators, seeing the trends that are coming up, and, you know, the trends might not be at all of the Title 1 schools or all of the non-Title 1. There could be a subset of those groups. So, we know that we have challenges, we always have challenges in education, things are, are challenging, but I think we have those structures in place, and it's, it's exciting to think of the things that people are going to come up with, so that these things that, that are being raised tonight are hot topics, and I think that they're going to come out. So, I know that our three administrators have been working on explaining the function of those instructional leadership teams, how they're going to work, how they're going to get started. I know that we had to get the school year off to a start, but I've been talking with Dr. Mosley, and he assures me that these things are in process, so, and there is a component of the strategic plan, where what's happening in those teams will be reported back to the board. So, I think that you can look forward to regular updates of what's happening in those teams. We have the middle school team, we have the social-emotional team, there are a lot, you know, if you, I think it's Appendix J, perhaps? So, if you look at what those task forces are, they're addressing just these issues.
Well, just as a follow-up, I don't know that we, we do now what we did in the past. I know there was more talk of readiness coming through, up to kindergarten, first grade, or retention in the past than we do now. If there's no retention, no readiness, and the kids are marched forward, whether they're ready or not, and the proficiency levels are sometimes a little bit low, does that present a problem for the student? You know, maybe the student's not ready, and after a while, the student feels that they don't make the grade, and they give up trying. I'm just trying to make sure. We look at all the angles and, and consider what's, you know, in, in cooperation with the teachers and the parents, how do best address this problem?
And I think that I'm looking for my sheet, but I can't put my hand on it right now, but there is a component of that, where all of those discussions and decisions are going to be research-based. So, part of the instructional leadership team is to do research into those issues, so that we're making well-informed choices.
Then report back to us.
Yes.
We had a middle school teacher that said, "My students know they will pass, whether they do well or not." So, does that mean that they, they don't have to try, they know they're, they're going to get promoted? You know, there's a little bit of that factor to consider. What do we do to help that teacher who came to us in, you know, with her concerns?
I think we're, we're, we're giving, we're, we're talking about a shift. A lot of the strategic plan is a shift, and we're giving shared responsibility for that. So, it's, it's between, you know, the people who are working with students every day, our administrators, and the board, working as a team. So, I would expect that the board will respond to the research-based conversations that are happening at the, the, the building level, and coming up to us with their recommendation, instead of us trying to decide and pushing that down.
I'm not trying, I'm just asking-
No, no, that's what, so I-
So, when they do that, if they will report to us, that'd be fabulous.
Yep, yep, that's part. Dr. Mosley, do you want to speak to that reporting part?
Yes, I would say that the answer to the question was, if there was a student who is struggling, and how do we support the student, was the question. The first thing is that I think that when we talk about the shift, that's not what the strategic plan, and that's not our focus. Our focus is helping this child first, and really putting those resources first. In terms of reporting back, absolutely. Part of that is establishing these teams within the building, building base, with the designated people, not only just to help the student, but to also network and support the work that Dr. McKinney talked about. And finally, of course, we're going to report back, not report back just to the board itself, but report back district-wide. Part of what we talked about is that, in fact, a lot of these schools were not sharing the information and working in silos, so the fact that we've started to organize and coordinate this level of discussion around not just growth, but how we're looking at growth, what are the factors we're looking at, are we really evaluating growth through the same lens, district-wide? All of these questions that I just posed, a lot more will be teased out and addressed in time. There's no silver bullet in terms of any learning style or method. We are a public school that gets and receives all walks of life. Some of our kids have had exposure to learning many years before they stepped foot, and some of our kids have never even embarked on a routine on just going to school, and Dr. McKinney mentioned that with this new kindergarten classroom coming up. So, we're excited about the work. You know, there's 30 days, or sometimes 31 days in a calendar month, and so there's never enough time to get this work done, but, you know, I, I think the teachers, the administrators, and the kids are really excited to move forward on this.
Okay. I think that this is a really healthy discussion. I think that some good things are coming out, and I thank you, Dr. McKinney, because part of your presentation has, well, it has an educational component for members of the board and members of the community, and I think that that's, that's a really good thing. At this point, I would like to pass it over to-
Oh, excuse me. I have a page and a half of questions on the remaining slides.
Okay.
So, my expectation is, we were going to review it and have our question answered. You asked us to make notes, I made notes. When will that happen? And I don't think the meeting tonight should continue. We've been here two hours, I think we've digested a lot. We've consumed the, the meeting time that we generally give to, to committees. So, and that's why I said in my initial comment, I hoped the chair would break- So, and that's why I said in my initial comment, I hoped the chair would break this up into parts. So I'm not ready, personally, I'm not on the committee, but I would say I'm not ready for the presentation on secondary until we complete and have a chance to ask our questions on elementary.
Okay. I think that, given the length of this presentation and that Ms. Fitzpatrick has taken the time to come here tonight, I would like to give her an opportunity to make her presentation. And if at the end, we have more questions, this is certainly an ongoing present, an ongoing issue. Teaching and learning in our schools is not something that we're going to tie up in a neat little bundle today. But I think that with the questions and the presentations so far from Dr. McKinney, we've made a good start. This is something we can certainly circle around to. But I want to be mindful of everyone's time and I would like to pass it over, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Fitzpatrick. Ms. O'Henze?
I'm just concerned that we have technically 25 minutes left to this meeting, and I think it's a disservice to her to, to shove her, her presentation into 25 minutes plus questions. And I don't, I understand she's been here, and it's just that I've got a number of questions, not that many, but it, the logistics don't work unless we're going to stay here for three hours instead of two.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Mosley?
We will defer to the chair and we will follow the chair's lead. So we're here, we're here, we're here, and we're looking forward to this. We spent a lot of time doing this and we're here for the long haul. So Madam Chair, we'll do anything you'd like.
I would like to go on to the middle school presentation. I think that having both presentations in one night gives us a global perspective of our K-12, pre-K-12 services. So it's not like we're never going to have another time for questions, we certainly will, but I would like for-
Do it at the next meeting?
The next curriculum meeting.
I will put that in the queue and you will get an agenda. I will address that. I don't think that anybody can say, in the time that I've been the chair of curriculum, that your questions have gone unaddressed or unanswered.
Madam Chair, if I may, we came here tonight, you gave us a 125-page presentation. Anybody who looked at the materials would clearly understand it was not a one-night discussion. And you, in your decision, said write down your questions, you'll be able to answer them, you'll be able to ask them tonight. Now, I don't, I think you need to do that. If you, if you want to jump and do secondary, that's fine, but you need to schedule and commit, as far as I'm concerned right now, that the next curriculum meeting will resume on page 17 with Dr. McKinney, and we'll be able to ask our questions on this presentation.
I will, as I, I will continue as I have done the entire time I've been the chair of curriculum, meeting with Dr. Mosley and our assistant superintendents to set an agenda for the next time. So at this time, I would like to turn it over.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying that because Dr. McKinney included the strategic plan and how it ties into the data, that I didn't want to be redundant, so I did not include that. But all of this data and what we're doing for kids to move the district forward should be viewed to the lens-
Hold on, hold on for a second, someone's talking.
I'm trying to get some scrap paper so I can write my questions. Can I have these?
I'll walk to school, I'm not interested in this.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, you were interrupted.
Anyways, the idea is that this should be viewed from the lens of the strategic plan and how we're moving the district forward to support students. My presentation is, goes straight to the data. So I'm going to start with the first slide, which is the district performance in ELA, grades one through eight, and I believe Dr. McKinney showed this information but in a different graphic. And as you can see, that overall, there's a decrease in the two or more below level by 11% and an increase of at or above of 17%. So it may not be the progress that we want to see, but we are seeing definite progress. The next slide is a slide, grades one through eight in math. So that again is a slide that shows the information Dr. McKinney showed earlier, but in a different graphic. And as you can see, we had a decrease in two or more below of 12%, but here's what's really important, an increase of at or above of 24%. That's a huge gain, that's a lot of growth for our students.
I'm confused. I thought this was from middle school.
It is, but I included K through eight, so we had, I didn't mean to be redundant, but I wanted to include K through eight, and it's a different graphic for you, but I will be getting into the middle schools specifically in my next slide.
Thank you.
And this just shows the fall, winter, and spring for ELA. And it shows grade six, grade seven, and grade eight, so you can see all three. I will say, to be perfectly honest, we have a hard time motivating eighth-grade students, particularly in the spring, because they are, for lack of a better word, tested out. They are the group of students that do the science test, they do SAS, some of the schools do NAEP, not to mention our local assessments. And so no matter how hard the teachers try to motivate the students, in June, it's pretty hard to do, particularly with eighth grade. And if you've ever been around eighth graders, you understand that's not an excuse, it's just a reality. The next one is grade eight for the science. What I do want to say about this is this is concerning. I think there's a couple of reasons that we can be optimistic. Number one, the district has adopted and did adopt the Next Gen Science Standards. Our teachers in middle school have been trained, and now we are implementing Amplify, which is a new program that addresses phenomena and it pushes higher-order thinking skills and it aligns with the SAS. But I, as an anecdotal example, I was talking with a principal who had gone into a class to observe, and the principal said that when I went into the class, there's a handful of kids that I ordinarily expect to in some way or another be behavior problems. They were completely engaged in the class, it's about asking questions, it's about searching for answers, it's about having opinions. And he said that he was so impressed by the level of engagement of students. So I think using the new program, now that we are aligned with the Next Science Standards, we're going to see improvement here.
Excuse me, but the slide that we have has a number of 52 is our next slide. The slide up here is number 69. So are you jumping around through the presentation that we received?
The numbers are misnumbered on the slideshow because, I don't know why.
Does your, do your slideshow numbers include Dr. McKinney's slides?
Yeah, I think that's why, that's why.
He had way more than 17 pages.
Okay, the, the point is, we're going to say that the-
We can't follow, given the materials we were given.
You can follow, because this slide mirrors what's in your presentation. So we're not going to get bogged down in the page numbers. But if you look, the, the sequence of the slides is the same, and if you turn pages as the screen changes, you should be able to follow.
Now, specifically for Elm Street Middle School, it shows the ELA reading diagnostic across fall, winter, and spring for all three grades. Grade six is on the left, seventh is the middle, eight is on the right. And grade six decreased in two or more grade levels 10%, which means 10% of the students are moving up and doing better. And there was an increase of at or above of 6%. And in seventh grade, same thing, a decrease of 10% in the below, or two or more below, and an increase at or above of 8%. And it's also 10% in eighth grade and an increase of about 7%. Ultimately, what this is showing us is that we're seeing growth. It may not be as rapid as we want, but we're not going backwards, we are making forward And then for you, I included the middle school, Nashua Middle School on the right, and then Elm Street on the left, and I've provided these for all three grade levels across the district. What you're going to see is there is not a lot of variation between the three middle schools. It's not like one middle school is performing significantly better than another middle So that was grade six. The next one is grade seven. And as you go through these, when the time comes, if you have questions, but I think they're pretty self-explanatory, and they're there just for your informational purposes. And then grade eight. The next slide is Elm Street in math. And as you can see, we have the sixth grade on the left, seventh grade in the middle, and eighth grade on the right. Again, you can see that we are achieving some growth. I think that what's important here too is to see the number of students that are progressing or they're early on grade level, so that they're, the progress is there. And yes, we can do better, and we're in the process of doing things for that to happen, which I'll get to later. But in sixth grade, there was a decrease of 6% in the two or more below and an increase of at or above of nine. Grade seven, there was a 9% decrease in the red and an increase of 10% in the green. And eighth grade, 3% in the red and increased 3% in the green. And again, I'm going to point out that eighth grade is particularly challenging. And then the next few slides are the sixth grade compared to the district. Seventh grade compared to the district. And eighth grade compared to the district. Again, the point being that there are slight variations, but it's not statistically significant enough to say that there's one middle school that's high-performing and another school that's not. Which speaks to the fact that we have great teachers in all of the middle schools who are working very hard to support students. The next slide is specifically Fairgrounds Middle School. Again, this is the diagnostic across sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for ELA. So you can begin to see that I developed a pattern here to make it comprehensive. In ELA, grade six, they decreased in the two or more, it decreased 9% and increased at or above 13%. In seventh grade, they decreased the two or more by 6% and they increased the at or above by 8%. And in eighth grade, below six, below, they improved by 6% and the increase at or above was 5%. And again, for you to see that there's not a huge difference between individual schools and the middle schools of the district, I included slides for grade six. The next one is grade seven. And then the third is grade eight. Fairgrounds Middle School Math, it shows the three grades, six, seven, and eight, again, same format. And sixth grade, they had a 12% improvement in two or more below and an increase of at or above of 11%, which is a, a good number. And for seventh grade, 6% out of the red and 12% into the green, for lack of a better way to describe it. And in eighth grade, the decrease of two or more below was 10% and an increase of at or above, above 6%. Again, I included the slides to show the comparison across the district. So you have grade six, grade seven, and grade eight. And my assumption is, part of the reason I'm going through this fairly early is because I know that you've had this ahead of time and I'm positive that you all looked at it and evaluated it ahead of time, so I know that I don't have to spend a lot of time on the slides because I'm positive that you've already taken the time to look at it. The next one is Penachuk. And that shows the performance across the three grades, six, seven, and eight in ELA. And sixth grade decreased in two or more by 13% and increased at or above by 14%. Grade seven decreased in two or more below by 7% and increased at or above by 15%, which I think is an impressive number. They decreased two or more below 11% in eighth grade and they increased at or above by 6%. And then there's a comparison across the district for each grade. Grade six, grade seven, and grade eight. Then we move on to the next slide, which is math across the district and the three diagnostics for each grade, six, seven, and eight. As you can see, there's an overall decrease of two or more levels below of 8% in sixth grade and an increase of at or above of 13%. In seventh grade, there's a decrease in two or more below of 6% and an increase at or above of 12%. And in grade eight, there's a decrease of two or more below of 4% and an increase at or above of 7%. Again, we're making progress, there's a lot of kids that land in the one grade level below or early on grade level. So for example, a seventh grader taking this test in the fall may end up testing early on the grade level. And that's most likely someone that would move into the on-grade level or above after each subsequent test. And then again, the district comparison for you folks to have a look at for sixth grade, for seventh grade, and for eighth grade. Again, when we're complete, if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The next slide shows the three middle schools. And this is SAS. The way that I'm reporting SAS is I did not do the historical of SBAC, I just did SAS. And as you can see, for the three years, it's across the top, 16, 17, 18, and 2018, 19. And you can see the percentages of students that were either at proficient or above proficient.
So, you said we could ask you a question?
I think she said at the end, so if you just take a job, we're gonna-
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And, and I am also going relatively quickly because I know that some board members expressed concern that I was getting later. So that was- Yes, thank you. No, but that was Fairgrounds. This is Elm Street. Wait, what? Was that the district? We were on the district page. Yes, you're right, all middle schools, forgive me, I'm sorry. Yes, now I'm going to Elm. And Elm Street, you can see grade six, grade seven, and grade eight, and you add together above- And you add together above proficient and proficient to get students that performed at higher levels, approaching proficient. We have a number of students there. Below proficient is where we have challenges that we're addressing through lots of different kinds of interventions. So for example, last year, grade six, 42% were above proficient or proficient and 31% were approaching. So when you put those together, that gives you the 73% of students that are from approaching proficient above. Grade seven last year, 40% were above proficient or proficient and 21% were approaching. When you combine the numbers for above proficient and proficient, they are higher than the below proficient. Okay? So it's easy, these are easily laid out, so they're simple to read and to tell. The grades, the year. And again, I only did SAS because there was a conversion from SBAK, so I did not include that data.
You can't compare both tests anyways, they're different tests.
Correct, correct. So this was ELA and then we went to math for Elm Street. And again, sixth grade had 29% above proficient or proficient and 26% approaching. So I think you can see how I did the math here to add the numbers together for students that are experiencing success on SAS. Grade seven, you combine above proficient and proficient and you get 34%. Okay? And then Fairgrounds, same thing with the SAS and the way it's laid out for you. Grade six, 38% were above or at proficient and 29% were approaching. So these are the numbers that are reported by the state. And all I did was combine above proficient and proficient to give you a clear percentage of students that did well. And then 18, 19, Fairgrounds in math. Next is Penachuk. Again, the first slide is middle school performance on ELA across two years. And if you look at it as another example, in ELA last year, in sixth grade, 41% were above proficient or proficient and 33% were approaching. Seventh grade, 51% were above proficient or proficient and 26 were approaching. And grade eight, 37% were at proficient or proficient and 26 were approaching. So I think it's pretty clear how I put the numbers together for those percentages. And then Penachuk in math. And it's set up the same way. In terms of next steps, middle schools are currently working on district-wide assessments. As a matter of fact, I had a meeting this afternoon with the middle school curriculum liaisons, the humanities coach and the high school department chairs so that we can be talking about assessments and with an eye on high school and what the expectations are for students entering high school. We also have been using the SAS interim assessments to assess student progress and these assessments are not reported by the state. It's something we have access to so that we have a way to monitor students' progress. Also, what I, is huge in the middle schools is that we're getting consistent with our programs. We have math, we have Eureka. Eureka was implemented in elementary school and then sixth grade, then seventh grade, then eighth grade. And so over time, students are not being exposed to different language of different math programs. So it's not like they go from one grade to the next and they have to learn a new vocabulary because Eureka's vocabulary is consistent. Also, the way that it is structured, it spirals so that students learn more difficult and deeper things as they go and has them better prepared for high school math. Science, as I said earlier, we just adopted Amplify and teachers are working on implementing that. Part of the implementation is the math coach is having meetings with them. She, not math, I'm sorry, science coach is having meetings with them. She's also doing office hours in each building. We have an Amplify representative coming for a full-day workshop with all of our science teachers, which the principals are helping facilitate that because that's a lot of people out of the classroom. We designed it to be on the early release day so that they would not be out for a full day. And in English Language Arts, we, StudySync was adopted when I got here and there's been a lot of work in StudySync, also developing common assessments and making sure that they're implementing it with fidelity so that wherever students are in school in our middle schools, they're getting a consistently implemented curriculum. So there's many things in place as well as the committees that we spoke about. One of the things I will tell you is the middle school steering committee. One of the things that is part of our committee is looking at an accountability system at the middle school. Now whether that leads to them having the opportunity for competency recovery or we find different strategies to help them be successful, our plan is to find a way to hold students accountable and support them at the same time so that they know that middle school is an important building block to success in high school. Okay, so that's middle school. Next is the Nashua North and Nashua South data. And there's SATs, that should be PSATs and advanced placement scores, five years of data. I will start with the graduation data. I want you to, you can see the numbers on the right-hand side. What I do want to point out is that these graduation rates don't include the high-set students, students that pass the high set and summer school graduation numbers. So our graduation rates are actually higher than they appear. At a certain point in the summer, the state does recalculate graduation rate and some of the students who did the summer school graduation in June, not August, do count. And I was looking at the data because I was just interested to see and comparing Nashua to other school districts. This past year, 30 school districts in the state had a much worse graduation rate than either Nashua High School did. The year before it was 17. So obviously, we've put some things in place to help students be successful and help them graduate from high school. And I'll be talking more about that as we go. And also, I put a little note at the bottom. The state hasn't released the 18, 19 numbers yet. They have a calculation that they use to determine graduation rate on cohorts and it's not something districts do on their own. So the only reason the 18, 19 data isn't there is because we don't have it yet. Okay? When it comes to grade level achievements on SAS, I do want to point out a few things. Students can opt out of SAS, less and less students are taking SAS. And SAS at the high school level for science is offered at the same time as AP exams. So the students that are taking SAS are not reflective of our entire student body. So although these, these numbers look concerning, there's reasons for it. And we have a number of students that opt out of SAS. Okay? And so my next slide explains our movement to SATs. So the state no longer required SBAK or SAS and KNECAP as of 2017. So students didn't invest in SBAK and SAS or KNECAP even when offered and they opted out at great rates. The last time it was offered, I think 127 students took it. Students are more motivated to perform on SATs, so although they could opt out of SATs, less students did because they saw the value in SATs, especially in terms of college and having those SAT scores for college. So, and as I said, SAS is offered at the same time as AP testing. SATs are not at the same time as AP testing. And so if you look at a student that's taking two or three AP classes, they're picking the AP exam over the state exam. Okay? So this is the SAT and PSAT data on the class of 2020 and it shows the mean score, how many met both benchmarks. And what that means is, for example, if you look at the first column where it says number of participants and it says 357 and the mean score was 995, met both benchmarks is regarding both math and English reading and writing. So...
Can I ask something quick and clarify?
Sure.
This is out of 1600 still?
No, this is, each class is different in terms of like how many kids take it? Is that what you're asking?
No, I mean, the scores.
Oh, 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 yes, yes, yes.
It should be 1600. Then they added that like writing portion.
Right, right.
And then I stopped paying attention. So it's out of 1600, not whatever the other one was?
What's the top score?
That's a great question. I thought I knew until you just asked me.
Well, I don't know if the PSAT has a writing component or not.
PSAT or SAT?
I don't care.
It's my understanding, I know I can speak to the PSAT. It's still, I believe it's at the 1600. That's how they grade that. I'm not sure about the SAT, I'm assuming it's the SAT. I think they went back, I think it was at one time at 2400.
Yeah, and then they went back.
And I think they went back because it just got way too much. Everyone's used to the 18, the 1600, so.
Okay.
But we'll just follow up on that.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I didn't understand the numbers. So it shows, it shows the SAT scores for the class of 2020, but it also shows their 10th grade PSAT scores. As we go, you'll see that one of the things that we have done is added PSAT 8, 9 so that the students have the opportunity to practice the PSAT another year, but it also gives us more data to know where to focus for the students. So each class, because now the next slide is the class of 2021, and it shows the mean score for the students and it shows their PSAT scores. And you can see that this one added PSAT 8, 9 because we started that last year. And then that's why you'll see on the last slide that PSAT, this is the freshman class results, so now they're sophomores. The only, the reason that there's only the PSAT 8, 9 is because last year was the first year they took the test. Okay? Now, the next page explains these numbers and what we do for students. So to support students for SATs, there is a Saturday practice session where students go in, they take the SAT online, it electronically calculates it and then it gives you access to the Khan Academy and tells you exactly the areas that you need to focus on to improve your score. So there is an electronic connection to Khan Academy. There's after-school intervention in math for students and it's on the bubble that we really focus on. However, it's open to any student that wants to come. But we reach out in particular to students who we want to help cross the threshold into passing or passing score. As I said, we instituted PSAT for 8, 9 so they have another year of practice and we have more data. And last year, and it worked really well, we designed the school day to accommodate testing at once for all grades. Seniors had the option of classwork towards graduation, community service or college visits. But the ninth, 10th and 11th grade at both schools were all testing on that day. So it sets up a environment that will support testing. Okay? Excuse me, advanced placement data and it goes across the five years. You can see, for example, in 2019, the total number of AP students was 331, total number of exams was 623. As you know, some students take multiple AP classes. What I will say about it is that freshmen typically only take one AP because of the way it's planned. Sophomores typically only take two. There are kids that are able to, because of work they did online and previously, can take more APs. But typical freshmen take one AP, typical sophomores take two APs. So these numbers reflect more juniors and seniors than it does freshmen, sophomores. And then the number of students with three or above and the total number of students percentage-wise with scores three or above. And of course, three or above is what they're aiming for. I did talk to both Nate and Keith today and I asked them, you know, why do you think some kids choose not to? And one of the things that we talked about before that they said, it may be a factor, but they think it's more that when the student's doing the course and they're not doing so great, they decide to opt out and not take the exam because they can pass the class without taking the exam. But the other piece that may be a contributing factor is that students have to pay for this and even with free and reduced lunch. They do get a little bit of a discount, but they have to pay. And I spoke to Nate today and the college board does give some free exams. They gave North five free exams. That's a drop in the bucket. So they were going to call the college, excuse me, call the college board and say, hey, can you help us out here?
What is the cost to the student?
Well, it depends on how many they take, but I believe it's, isn't it 35?
I think it's $35 an exam or $55 an exam, I forget.
I know it went up.
It's more than 50 per exam.
More than 50 per exam, yeah. Because I remember talking to some of our student reps last year about paying more than $200 to take the AP exams that they were taking for the classes that they had enrolled in. So for our high-achieving students of limited means, this is very difficult.
And so they felt like that had some impact because if you don't have the money to take the test, you don't have the money. And it's not like we don't try to help kids in every way we can, but... And then it shows, the next slide shows advanced placement enrollment, 2015 and 16. So you can see the number of students in each grade level that were enrolled, both at North on the top and South on the bottom. And then 2016, the number of students enrolled. So we do have a significant number of students taking advanced placement courses. And before I arrived here, I know that there was a big push for kids to take APs and we... And we offer more advanced placement courses than any other district in New Hampshire. And I'd venture to say part of Massachusetts too as well. We get, we offer a lot of AP classes.
I looked it up, it's 94 per exam, plus late fees if you don't do it on time.
There you go, thank you.
So, it's pricey. So, if you have more than one. And then, sometimes students figure out where they're going. And if that college doesn't give them advanced placement or credit for them, they may take the course and not take the exam. So, there's a lot of strategies besides money.
Yeah. 94?
Yeah, and if you're late, there could be a $40 late fee per exam.
Per exam.
Not cheap.
That's crazy, isn't it? So, if we have students taking three or four classes, that's a lot of money. Yeah, and juniors and seniors typically are the ones that are taking multiple APs.
Wow.
And as I said, there's a few, you know, there's a few outliers of freshmen that take more than one and sophomores that take more than two. But the heavy load of kids taking the exams are juniors and seniors. And I do believe that part of that is because they know which schools they want to attend and what APs they'll accept.
Especially if you're a senior, you've already gotten in. And your school may say, okay, we'll give you three credits for that. Whereas, some other schools say, no, but it's nice that you did it. So, you saved the 94 bucks.
Right. So, then, this just goes through and shows you the enrollment for AP courses across those years. Okay? And then, I know that people are interested in beyond graduation. So, I have some information here. I am going to apologize. Somehow, the same slide got repeated, but I have the information for those years. So, I do apologize for that. But starting with 2015, beyond graduation, there was 570 students from both schools that opted for a two- or four-year college. And some went straight to employment, some went into military. A growing number are going into career eds. And then, there are students that took that gap year that has become so popular. So, I do apologize that the slide was repeated. I'm not sure how that happened. But in 2016, 535 students chose a two- or four-year college.
Could you break it down per school, please, so we can just fill in this grid?
That's not 18.
Yeah, I'm confused now.
Where's 16? Do you have the chart for 16?
15 should be 16.
I just got it, I just printed it off today, but I only have these copies right here.
So, it's not on the screen?
No, it's not on the screen. It was a mistake in the PowerPoint.
So, can we put that in the next packet?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want me to break it down for you now?
No.
Okay.
Too many data points.
Yeah, we will put it in the packet.
Okay, all right. So, 2018, the number of students, wait. Beyond graduation, 428 chose a two- or four-year college. Interestingly, careers in education has gone up at South. And I would venture that that's the Health Services CTE program. But, and straight to employment, Nashua was, North was 75, South was 19. South, seven went in the military, North 19. And I think part of that may be the ROTC program is in North. And it's not to say South students can't participate. I just think that, you know, it's accessible. And then, 2019, 513 students chose the two- or four-year college option. And I believe you do have this slide. I just, you don't have 16 and 17, which I will include next time. And several more students went straight into employment. And the number of students taking that gap year has risen. And I don't think that's a Nashua thing, I think it's a national thing. And for military, South was nine, and North was 11. Also, some of the employed students, for example, I do know anecdotally that some of those students that were employed right away are students who went through a CTE certificate program and were hired immediately. For example, at an auto dealer, as an example. And also, the careers in education, not careers, I'm sorry. The Health Services, they can LPN when they finish, and they can begin working in the field. So, the next that I know is a concern for folks is addressing dropouts. And it was really, really important for the administrators and the directors of guidance, for you guys to know that we don't, we don't take dropouts lightly. We do everything we can to prevent this from happening. And we've exhausted all the plans. When a student finally is dropped, we meet with them, we meet with the parents, we try to come up with a success plan. There's times where a counselor and another adult will go to the house to try to work with the student and the family to get them back in school. We try to help them set up for the HISA testing or other programs. We also encourage them to do the adult ed, which has been very successful for people that have been to graduation. You know that we're really hitting a number of kids there. So, the attempts are to get students in adult ed. Even if they finish, they're not, they're counted on a dropout. Other programs, for example, Clearway, we try to send kids to Clearway. And then, the HISA test. And then, competency recovery has been huge in helping curb the tide of dropouts. Because if students are able to do competency recovery, they don't feel like they're in such a deep hole that they can't dig themselves out.
I, a couple of years ago, our dropout rate was very, very low. And I think it was 3%. Because I know that we were looking at a grant for dropout money. And I was offended that we didn't even apply for that because our dropout, maybe it was 11%. I don't even think it was that high. It was very, very low. So, this surprises me, it's been creeping up.
Actually, this is from the state website. And no, you don't have this. But the Nashua total dropout rate for last year was 1.4%.
Well, I think that's pretty doggone good. 1 point, what?
1.4% for last year.
Finance committee is approving a contract on Thursday for a dropout intervention. No, it's just straight money.
I mean, that, that really offends me, that we would apply for something like that when our dropout rate is very, very low. It just looks like you're going after money. That's all you're doing.
And, and I will say...
For something else.
And I will say, especially into, when you compare us to districts that are comparable to us in size and diversity, our dropout rate is low. One dropout is one too many. We do everything we can, but I don't think there's a way to completely obliterate dropout.
Of course not. There's some kids that just don't want to go to school and get smart.
You have a recommendation here about creating a HISA program in the high school? Doesn't that set the wrong expectation for our students?
And that's the reason I put that there, because that would be a possible thing. However, in talking with everybody, the same person that said, well, we could do this, is the same person that said, but I feel like it sends the wrong message. And I agree. But, the reality is, we could do this. I don't think anyone's recommending that we add a HISA preparation class.
But how does Brentwood fit into this?
Clearway.
Clearway.
No, I asked how Brentwood fits in.
Brentwood, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Those are high-risk students. Aren't they at risk of not graduating and they're borderline dropout for whatever reason?
But the Brentwood program has a lot of supports in place. And actually, we had Brentwood students graduate last year.
Brentwood special ed. So, that's totally different. And they have supports geared towards their IEPs. And it's, some of them have high, I wouldn't use the word high-risk to label all kids at the Brentwood program.
Okay. The next slide, because I said how much it has helped us, competency recovery. And I'm giving you 2018-19 numbers. I do want you to know that our competency recovery, our summer school, and our adult ed program have grown in leaps and bounds. And I want to give Lori Rothaus credit for that. So, that's why I'm only giving you these numbers. Competency recovery, when she first came in to take over, was not well organized. And now, it is, and we have everybody on the same page and everybody working towards the same goal, which is to help students recover competencies so they can graduate on time. So, you can see the 9th through 12th grade in English. This past year, 169, social studies, 98, science, 132, math, 119, and world language is 15.
Is that one year or two? Because it says two years.
No, 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 it's 2018-19 school year.
School year 19.
18-19. It starts in September of 19.
Why does it say last two years at the top?
Great question. It shouldn't be.
Thank you.
Okay? And then, the adult ed graduation rates, which is the next page. And I just want to show that to show how the adult ed graduation has continued to increase. And June of 19, this past June, was our largest group of 45. And then, in July, another 21. So, our adult ed graduation rates have gone up. Often, that's students that struggle to stay in school for a variety of reasons. You know, there's more than one woman who had a child and then came to adult ed to finish her degree. Students who struggled in the regular school environment, but could perform in adult ed. And there's a lot of supports in adult ed to help kids be successful and to make it to graduation. And as the people that have been to this graduation know, some really deep connections get made with the adults that support them. And so, there was a total of 230 adult ed graduates from 16 to 19. And some of them are counted as dropouts, and that doesn't change. But they still graduated from high school and got their diploma. So, that's it. I know there was a lot of stats, but Dr. McKinney covered the strategic plan and our philosophy around education. So, I thought I'd just get straight to the niggery.
Thank you very much. That was very comprehensive. And I think that going from K to 12 gives us a good view of our students who stay here, who are here from kindergarten through 12th grade, what their schooling is like. At least from the perspective of testing and graduating, which is what we want everyone to do, graduate. Okay? Why don't we, since it's 8 o'clock now, why don't we take like 10 minutes of questions real quick? If you have something on Ms. Fitzpatrick's presentation, you can maybe prioritize to something that's a burning question for you. Mr. Kaufman?
So, I appreciate your review of all the statistics and highlighting the growth that it's experienced. And the problem I have, when you just look at growth, which is nice that we're trending and that's good news. But the fact is, on many of these slides, we could have an 84% deficiency, or at least more than 50% deficiency still out there. Yes, we've improved some. You said yourself, we're improving, but not as quickly or as, as much as we might like. But the fact is, on average, I would say it's at least the majority of the students in those grades that's still struggling. So, as, as much as we're making progress, I want to know what we have to do to bring everybody up. And that's kind of a question I, you know, alluded to earlier with Dr. McKinney. Because it's unacceptable, right? I think we have to say it's unacceptable. And that, yes, we're making progress, but we need to somehow jumpstart this. This is not fair to the students that are struggling. I, you know, there's, everybody has lots of reasons why these students don't get it yet. And, but we have to figure out what they are, and we have to help these kids. It's unacceptable to me to have half the students not at grade level or, well, worse than that, two or three or more grade levels down. So, I don't know, there's an answer, but I, it has to be said that, you know, great growth. But at the end of the day, half our kids are not there.
So, to answer your question, number one, we do want to see performance better. Some of the things that we're doing at middle school are tied directly into the strategic plan, which at each school, there's instructional leadership teams. And this year, starting this year, we are going to be having the middle school reading teachers and the middle school literacy teachers meeting as a cohort to talk about what they're doing for reading interventions, how they are addressing the needs of students. If, I would be remiss if I didn't say, we could use more resources for the remediation, just like elementary. But we're doing what we can with what we have. And part of that is from a school-wide view, for all the people that really impact the students' growth and their achievement, to talk to each other and make plans about how they're going to address the needs. The other piece is, it can't be understated how important it is to have a unified curriculum. And we have one now in math, we have one now in science, and we have one in English. And when you first implement new programs or you change how you do your curriculum, for example, in Amplify, there is going to be some growing pains. That's a reality. But as we move forward, we provide the professional development. These groups of teachers are talking with each other about, what are you doing for your reading interventions and what's working for you so that we can gain consistency around remediation across the middle schools? It's going to help. The reality is, when I came to the middle schools, they were all very, very different and all very much doing their own thing. And so, the first two years and continuing on, the idea is to get the three middle schools aligned so that we have consistency in how the curriculum is being implemented so that we were, we're more able to see where we need to do more work. And I know the scores aren't great, but we're showing growth. So, we're moving in the right direction, and you're right, we need to do better. I don't disagree.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you for your report, Ms. Fitzpatrick. A couple of years ago, the Nashua Community College complained about our students having to have to take remedial courses before they continue. I would appreciate, if you could, the next meeting, provide the number of students that had, had to take remedial courses. I think if we tracked that, it would be very worthwhile to see where our students are failing.
Okay.
Thank you, I'd appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hoensie?
I have questions to be from Mr. McKinney. I don't know if you want to do it now or the next meeting.
Well, I think, as I said, this is an ongoing conversation. And I think that since it's getting late, you can always email your questions to me. I'll pass them on so that they can prepare answers.
There's two topics that we haven't addressed. As a committee, PACE hasn't been discussed in committee, and the competency grading in the middle school. There was, there was a resolution that was passed by the previous board asking for evidence that this new grading improved learning before that they were implemented in the middle school. So, I think those two are agenda items going forward, so they're not so much...
So, can you just repeat that?
Okay. The competency space grading, there was...
In middle school?
In the middle school. It's not there. And we were holding off on that until we had evidence data from the high school that it improved learning. Because for the initial two years that we saw it come in, we saw it going in the opposite direction. So, we didn't want to put it in the middle school until we were certain that it would improve things. And then, the PACE is a totally new subject, which the board is probably not well-versed on, and it hasn't been approved by the board. And I'd like to know why it's being used, or if it's being used, before it's implemented.
Okay.
And can we go into a quick non-public?
I'm going to say no. I'm not going to go into non-public at this time. That would be something for our board president to take up, if she wants to do that at a later time.
Does she have questions?
She hung up, unfortunately, we lost her.
She hung up. Unfortunately, we lost her.
We lost her. We lost her a long time ago.
Regarding a non-public, I will have a non-public at the end of the next board meeting, which is next Wednesday. If it's something that...
A week from Wednesday, you're saying?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Not tomorrow. Wait.
Today's Monday.
Today is Monday.
Feels like Tuesday.
Our next regular board meeting is not this Wednesday, the following Wednesday. And I do have a non-public scheduled because there are some things I'd like to update.
I thought there was an urgent issue that, that I wanted an update before I see it in the newspaper.
I think I'm uncomfortable with that at this point. I'm going to discuss it with our, our board president, and I'll move forward in consultation with her. Is that okay with you?
I don't know that... We can do that.
Pardon me? Are you saying you want a non-public now?
The minutes are sealed. What's the big difference? I, as a board member, I think there's things going on that I would like to be appraised of.
I think if Dr. Mosley has 10 minutes, five minutes, I'm willing to let Dr. Mosley give an update because I think I know what you're asking about. And my understanding is Dr. Mosley's on it, and updates have been made. So if you're willing to do that, if it would save emails and consternation, I think that's not a bad idea. Did anyone else, though, have items for curriculum? Or should we, I mean, should we kind of table this topic and come back to it next time?
I think so. I think so. Send me your questions. I will pass them on so that they can prepare answers, so that they'll not be talking off the cuff. Not that you're not good at that. You're very good at that. But I think it would be nice at this time to kind of take a break, digest everything, and come back to it.
I would appreciate that, too, because reading 124 pages in three and a half days, I'm not a speed reader, so, or a simulator, so. I would appreciate it next time we have an opportunity for more questions.
Okay. All right, so I moved to adjourn?
I thought we were going to move to go into non-public.
Oh, is that, okay. Do we have...
During 91A32C matters which are discussed in public may adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a board member.
I have no idea what this issue is, so I can't speak to which one it is. Is that what you think?
She's making the motion.
Yeah, if I'm, I'll second it.
Okay.
Can, am I allowed to do that? I'm going to.
Yeah, you can stand.
Yes, because you're taking over.
Okay, I'm going to. And then we don't, we don't need to do a roll call. We can do a voice vote because we don't have anybody on the phone.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Okay, so we're in non-public at 8:08?